I didn't get it, so it shows everybody.
I think we just showed them. But I didn't want to.
It's freezing.
So if there is a toss.
Oh, wet, open?
Yeah.
Pre-service.
Not obvious.
No, nothing is obvious. It's technical.
Recording in progress.
Can you hear me, everyone? Zoom? I'd like to welcome everyone to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting. October 24th. First call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Mr. Lucio. Ms. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Olney.
Here.
And Ms. Tenney.
Yes.
We have a quorum tonight. I'd like to remind everyone and guests to be recognized by your chair if you wish to speak. And this evening will be recorded. Recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledged receipt of correspondence. The board received three separate emails from Jim Stocky, 10, 12, 14, and 15.
Oh, wow. What a real pleasure.
Welcome, Mr. Lucio.
12-meeting hiatus.
Do you need to check to make sure they can hear us?
I was walking out. Could someone unmute and just say that you can hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. At this time, I allow public comments on items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Anyone wish to speak? Okay. Moving on, we have a cell signaling project update from Peter Gordo. Peter, welcome. And you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Shamron. I appreciate it. Peter Gordo of, I'm a Hamilton resident. I've been helping cell signaling with the acquisition and now the beginning of the permitting process. And we wanted to, it's been, it's been probably six months before we were before the board, or since we were before the board, and wanted to come and offer just a very brief update as to where things stand on our end. And then equally importantly, just to make sure that the board knows that there's a, you know, an open line of communication should you have questions or concerns over, you know, in coming months. I have with me this evening Mark Glavsky and I see Craig Thompson as well. So there may be a couple of other members from the cell signaling team, but they're also with me this evening. So just very quickly, I'll run through a couple of updates. As you may know, or as you probably do know, we acquired the site in July, this past July. There were a total of four parcels that we purchased, a total of approximately 50 acres. The purchase did include the health club. For obviously reasons, we didn't, we didn't.
Joining the iPhone. I think it's.
For obviously reasons, we didn't publicize that, but we did end up acquiring that as well. The, we have installed a new operator in the health club. We're very excited that Jessica and Josh Pleka and a number of members of the former MAC management team have taken over the operation of the club. And we think it's going to be a great fit and we wish them very well. So we're excited that that's going to remain a fixture in the community. Over the last several months, cell signaling's been working very hard to select a design team. They went through a very rigorous evaluation process. They ultimately selected an architect by Innov HGA. They're a national, they're a global firm, tremendous amount of experience with lab work. They've also brought on other engineers, including VR Plus A Hancock Associates, who I think you know, and a land architect by the name of Michael Van Valkenburg Associates. So we're, that, that process ended in September. And so that team is beginning to work on a master planning process, which we hope will, which will continue through the fall and probably, probably towards the end of the year, will have a better sense of what we think the master plan for the site will look like. The, the scope of the project is similar to what we discussed last night when we last spoke. The Phase One, we think will be in the neighborhood of 120,000 or 125,000 square feet of lab and lab support space. We believe, currently, we believe that we will do all surface parking to support that. We think that the garage will go into Phase Two. We do see this as being, as having the potential for further development. We see another, the potential for another 200,000 or 300,000 square feet. Whether or not cell signaling will expand to that extent in the next five, 10, 20 years is to be seen, but certainly the site can accommodate it. In terms of utilities, we've been in discussion with your DPW regarding connection to your water and sewer. And we, as you can hear, we had some concerns regarding electric capacity to the site. We seem to have solved that, at least for Phase One. We've been assured that there's adequate electric capacity for, for our Phase One. We have some work in front of us to ensure that not only this site, but KPN in general have adequate electric capacity to support economic development going forward. But we're, we're comfortable that we have what we need for Phase One. Sustainable design remains a high priority for cell signaling. Highly efficient building envelope, maximizing electrification, geothermal, heat pumps and so forth are all part of the current plan. We'll be restoring portions of the site. Those of you who aren't familiar with it know that a good portion of it is pretty well-scarred, but there'll be large portions of it that are restored as part of this process. And obviously, all of our engineering will improve the stormwater runoff because currently there is, there is no, there is no treatment or filtration. In terms of the permitting process in front of the board, as I mentioned, we're going through this master planning process. We would hope to be before you in the first quarter of next year with a special permit application, special permit and site plan review application. That'll obviously depend on how the master planning process goes, but that's our current plan. We'll also be engaging with other boards, the SLIP Board, the Board of Health, and the CONCOM. Will all be on our agenda. So, and if we're, so if we're successful getting to you in the first quarter, we would hope to be able to, you know, work through your process in a reasonable amount of time, but a possible groundbreaking at the end of, somewhere towards the end of 2023. We see an 18-month construction process once we do break ground and with an occupancy in 2025. So that's, that's just an overview. As I say, this is as much, this is both an update as well as an opportunity to just ensure that we do have an open line of communication. So I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Peter. I'll go around the board with any questions. Anyone who want to have a question for Mr. Gordo? Laura?
I have a question, Laura Tenney. Thanks for the update. I'm interested in the timeline you're thinking about from reviewing the master plan level to, I think you said quarter, first quarter 2023, and then breaking ground at the end of 2023. That seems pretty accelerated to go from master plan to detailed design to construction mobilization by the end of the year. I wondered if you could just speak to that, to the extent you know more about that schedule.
Sure. And Laura, it is, it is certainly aggressive, but, but cell signaling's, you know, needs are, are aggressive as well. So we're trying, we're going to push it as hard as we can. I think that we will, we will have, our engineers believe that they can have what we need to file for a special permit sometime in the first quarter. But obviously, that depends on how far we, you know, how far, when we make a decision as to what the proper master plan is for the site this fall. So if it's December 31st, you're right. If we can work, work through some of that earlier in November, then we've got more time.
Thank you.
I assume you're, are you planning to do like a preliminary before submitting to do sort of a overview of the project with the planning board first?
I don't think we've, I don't think we've made a firm decision as to whether or not, because we haven't made a firm decision as to whether to commit on a preliminary basis or not. If you have advice in that front, we're, we're all ears.
Just that it might streamline your whole process. I don't know that it will, but it might.
Sarah?
As you may be aware, we are proposing revised special permit regulations at this town meeting. And so you might want to take a look at them. They're on the website. They are more performance-based. So to Gary's point, might be good to sit down and think about what our goals are on a, so that we can achieve them collaboratively because we do have, we were, we are hoping to move to performance-based review.
And, thank you. We, we actually spent some time last week going through those and want to understand what the differences are between the two, between the current bylaws and the proposed. But thank you for that.
Mary Christina, Chris, any questions?
I guess maybe at least you should maybe be kept in the loop as far as conversations with DPW. So it's not a shock when that information is brought to the planning board. So whatever those conversations are, maybe you should be kept in the loop as the chair. That's my number one. And then number two, I've just read a few things about geothermal and aquifers lately. So could you just forward any information so that we can become educated? It's so sensitive area with our water supply, and that was specifically a few articles that I read. So just so we're on the same page when that time comes.
Sure. We'd be happy to gather some information for you. We've got a couple of consultants that have tremendous amount of experience in that. So happy to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Well, we look forward to your project, seeing what you got.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Okay. At last meeting, we talked about Sue Brown leaving us as planner. And then we talked a little bit about having a high-level discussion with, you know, what we might be looking, ideas and criteria, job description for a search for a new planner. And to that extent.
Do we know why there's an echo? Did we try and fix this yet?
I don't know.
Can you mute iPhone too?
I'll mute as much as I can. Is that better?
No. It sounds like.
Okay. Is that better?
Maybe.
Yeah. So to that extent, I think so we, the town has sent us their consultant.
Extra set of hands is probably more.
Extra set of hands. Miss Beckman's here, joining us. And I think before we discuss, Susan, do you have any opening comments?
Yeah. So just to clarify my role and why I'm here, I'm assisting Greg in framing up the search for the new town planner. So the goal is to understand from the planning board specifically, the criteria, the skills, the things that you're looking for, getting very clear with benchmarking the different job descriptions that are out there currently today. I'm going to work with the HR folks to do that here. And to look at the roles and responsibilities specifically for what a new town planner would look like. The goal is to come back with a profile with all that information so that when the search does begin and the recruiting begins, there's a solid understanding of exactly what you're looking for, what the responsibilities are, the job description and so forth. So my hope is to listen in tonight for sure, but to maybe get 15 minutes. I know everybody's very busy. But over the course of the next week or so, 15 minutes with each of you individually, just to run through what you believe the most important characteristics, skill sets, kind of top three priorities you'd like to see this planner have and do, so that I can compile that into something that I can then turn back as a profile. So that's what it is in a nutshell.
Thanks, Sarah.
So I thought maybe that we had in our last meeting or two meetings ago, talked about having that conversation as a group, like maybe being prepared and doing that as a planning board.
Well, so tonight, let's have that discussion. And Sue's here to listen. And we'll move forward from there. I see Greg, do you have any comments?
Oh, hi, Ron. Thank you. Yeah. Just to elaborate a little bit, you know, the SLIP Board have embarked on a review of governance and how they can improve upon that. And so Susan, with Sue Brown's departure, this was a logical extension of some of her efforts to help out the SLIP Board and take a look at their functioning and how we function as a, as a town and different departments and how we can be supportive to our various, various boards and committees. As you know, we have quite a few. And so this, this effort can feed into that. So look forward to listening and hearing what you folks think make the most sense as we, as we move forward. There's certainly no lack of, lack of topics and issues to address.
Thanks, Greg. Would anybody want to start the discussion up? I have criteria, job description.
Can I just stop you again? This is really distracting for me. It stopped when Greg spoke. So is it possible it's Greg?
What if you had your mics on?
I don't, I'm not in.
I'll mute Greg.
I'm not on. I'm just having the documents.
I don't know.
Do you have double check?
It didn't happen once Greg was speaking, so I was just curious if that had anything to do with him.
Should I, should I turn this on?
Typically, echoing is a function of people in the meeting room having.
Gary, do you have your speaker on? Sure. You joined without audio.
I can join.
The only thing I can mute is this coverage. And I don't think I want to do that. Can I mute myself?
Yes, you should mute. Everything should.
Yeah, mute locally and see how it is.
Yeah, mute yourself because it's coming.
Doesn't allow me to mute myself.
Well, it should be picking up from the.
He's not using the audio here. So he doesn't have it.
I don't know. I think we'll just go on with the echo. Sorry. Technical difficulties.
Greg can unmute it and see if it does anything for it. I did notice that.
So is every, are you muted?
It has to be more than muted. It has to be you can't join with the computer audio. But he's not on it because you can't mute, he can't mute himself.
Yeah.
So.
The only people I can mute is 1623 coverage. Want me to try that?
Try it.
You don't want to do that.
He says don't do that.
Now you don't hear anything.
Okay.
Ooh, that was no echo though.
Oh, this is going to keep Becky on.
Oh, no problem. Ron, this is Becky, if I may.
Yes, Becky.
Who's, who's, do you have Tyler or Joan from 1623 helping out today?
There is someone here. I don't know if it's Tyler or Joe.
They can go around to each person's computer to make sure that whomever is on Zoom is actually appropriately muted because that happened to me last time.
We're not on. Only Ron is on.
Nobody else in there is on Zoom.
Anyone in the audience on? Because his computer is on out in the lobby. Maybe it's picking up. Can you just go out now?
Well, what about if there's somebody, if there's somebody, if Susan or whomever else is sitting there is on Zoom?
No, we're not on Zoom.
Okay. Becky, do you hear an echo?
Just go forward.
Not really.
Okay.
Try to move forward as best we can. On the town planner, any ideas for what we might be looking for? And I'll start with Sarah.
Well, since the only town planner that I know in this context is Sue Brown, I think it would be the strategy that Susan proposed makes a lot of sense where she gathers information from us all individually about what we want to see, but then goes out and looks at what other towns have for job descriptions, how it works. So I feel like I could be educated. It would be nice to get that broad perspective from using other towns' perspective. So, so I don't have, of course, I have ideas, but I'm, I'm not ready to share them yet. I think I would benefit from a broader look.
Laura?
Seeing examples of other municipal planner descriptions would definitely help. I think there are some basic credentials that determine a person's or, you know, define show a person's credentials. So AICP is a planner designation. There are others. Could be someone with an AIA architecture or ASLA landscape architecture. But it shouldn't be someone who is professionally credentialed and licensed, if that applies. And with appropriate, you know, some years of background of doing planning at municipal or institutional scale as a starting point. Multi-family housing, resiliency, I mean, some of the things that we're going to be looking at. Updating zoning, you know, any of those things that we've been sort of grappling with or are preparing to grappling, grappling with, relevant experience in those topics would be useful.
Thank you. Chris?
So I think one of the big problems that Sue Brown had was a confusion about her role and who she was reporting to. And I think for us on the planning boards, since she's the planner, we assume that she worked for us. But in fact, she worked for Greg. And I think that caused a lot of unnecessary tension since it wasn't clear to everybody exactly who she was working for and who she reported to. So I think that should be straightened out before we get into hiring anybody is to make sure that the town is clear about what the role of the planner is here and what boards can use those services and how those services get shared. Another problem I've noticed with the town is that boards do tend to operate in silos. And I think the thing that the planner could do is try to break that down a little bit. And so if the planner would serve the zoning board of appeals and the conservation commission and the affordable housing trust and even the housing authority, that could make coordination much easier. And I think that's a role that a planner could play in a town like this.
For myself, I'd be looking for someone who knows process pretty well and can brief the board on the current bylaws that we're, that are up at the particular meeting. Give us an overview of, you know, what the criteria are, which bylaws apply. Also regarding sharing a planner, I don't know if it's a full-time job or not, but like we all share town council, all the towns around here, would it be possible, is it to share a town planner with Hamilton? I don't know if that's even possible. I throw that out there to help supplement her salary or his, or his salary. Some thoughts that I had. Mary?
I think there's been a few good things said. I, I see the role as part-time. I don't think Manchester needs a full-time town planner. I like the idea of regionalizing a town planner with another town, the cross-function across boards so that we would get knowledge of what ZBA is doing, what Affordable Housing Trust is doing, get reports from them. We used to get what the, from the ZBA, what, what their final decisions were. So then when that application came in front of the planning board, that was very helpful. That would be good. Somebody that could put reports together, do research and do reports for the board, somebody with strong project management skills, economic development skills. And just to Laura's point, yeah, somebody that's a certified planner. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm just going to piggyback on all of those. I think most of those are great ideas. I like the regionalization. I like the part-time idea. I believe in the past, in my opinion, we've relied too much on MAPC. And I think that maybe the other half of a salary could be used to find consultants that, that is their niche and their expertise to supplement what the town's goals or the master plan is looking forward to addressing at that. Us as a board have not had a retreat in two years, so we haven't set. We've been pretty busy with the recodification, but hopefully after the recodification in November, we can start to address some other issues and maybe consultants, funds could be used for specific consultants instead of a salary per se. Because I think it's going to be very difficult to find someone that checks all those boxes. So we need to come up with the top maybe one or two, three priorities in a person and then maybe rely on some experts or consultants for the rest. I think project management is a very important one.
Now that's, now that's what it is.
Gary, did you want to spin the floor without monkey?
Well, I think if you add all, all this up, that's all been mentioned, it's pretty clear to me we need a full-time planner. 15 years ago, I, I talked with Essex about us sharing a planner a long time ago, somewhere around 12 or 15 years ago, and they were up for it, but I think they've got a planner on board now. And since she's been here, I think it's crystal clear, we do need full-time. And I think from what I see, what she was used for, I don't think anybody could have predicted how much time it was going to take. I think Greg, I think anyhow Greg was directing her to seek certain grants and then to follow through with the boards that were involved in those grants once they were found. That chewed up a lot of time. It would have been great if she could help us more, like you're saying, briefing us with submissions we've got and advise us as to which direction is the most timely, efficient way to go in handling some submissions. It might make our process go quicker, our meetings be shorter. If you also ask her to research subjects, which would be great, I think she just ended up with a lot of work to do and it was kind of hard to know ahead of time that we were going to spend so much time and effort on the bylaws, for example, as well as the whole variety of grants she touched base with while she was here. And I think it should, it seems clear to me that the reason we use MAPC is because it's a lot cheaper to get professional consultants and professional, I think this, as far as I understand, they're, they're set up to help towns as a cheaper way of getting different studies done, different planning work done. If you hire independent consultants, I think it's going to cost you a lot of money. But Greg will know the truth behind all this, but that's what I see. And I'd love, if we could just send, send you in writing, Susan, maybe any follow-up comments. It might be easier.
Sarah?
I'm not going to echo everybody's comments, but I would add, nobody's mentioned, that they should have experience with a town, prefer, a Massachusetts town would be ideal, as opposed to a city council. I think it's very different. And I think. And I think someone needs to have demonstrated experience in sort of getting things beyond a study. Implementation. And we can work together to build a back-and-forth where the planner understands that, that there are lots of opinions and the board understands that the planner has expertise. But the planner's not gonna be the definitive word in this town, I think. But I think somebody who's flexible and doesn't necessarily have preconceived notions, but can get things from study into implementation and has worked in a town.
Thank you.
I'll just add one last thing. I've been following Hamilton, Chobaco. The senior housing development off of Chobaco Road. And in that, I've watched the town planner presenting. He's the person who, if there's an application, he starts the project. He introduces it and he explains to the planning board. He has materials gathered beforehand. So just as a point of different way that a different town does things, maybe just be fine. I think it's helpful, the way that Hamilton runs it.
Very good.
In response to Sarah, I do think there's a lot of relevancy in having someone work for a town. I wouldn't rule out people who have come from city administrations because there tend to be more professional staff on a city administration and more complex problems of the, and even though we're a small town and trying to stay a small town, there are still a number of complex problems. And if someone's had exposure to those and been in a town that has taken measures to, you know, regulate them or whatever other, or do design standards, or, you know, there might be some specific tools that someone can bring and has experience with that could be very useful to us. And having exposure to those, I think, is relevant.
Yeah, and I think the big gap happened, Helene used to actually gather our materials, do the checklist things, and there was some kind of miscommunication, roles that changed. But whenever that happened, there seemed to be a big disconnect, so.
So the town planner needs to work closely with our admin.
But not me in the admin, administrator. It is a technical, professional role.
Right.
Okay. Susan, any closing, any comments?
No, these are great. And I would just say that to Gary's point, if you have any additional and want to just mail me, that's great, and I'll start compiling and working through this. And we'll share as we go along, so you're up to date on whatever we're finding in terms of job descriptions and things like that, so.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Greg, anything else to add or? All set?
No, we're on, I'm all set. Very helpful comments and look forward to additional feedback, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, before we get into recodification, I have an offer. We need to do a site visit on the Crocker Boatyard, Manchester Marine and Parks and Rec for the public hearing on November ninth. So Brian Pike has offered us a boat ride to visit the site. And my suggestion to the board, and I don't know if this works with everyone, although Thursday, and it'll be enough time for us to get a note out, at 3:00 PM. Supposed to be about seventy degrees and sunny. Nice day, we can park at Manchester Marine and go out and view the proposed slips. And then I would suggest at four o'clock, when we get back, to go to the one fifty-four Pine where the DPW has agreed to meet with us on their site walk. Although they have an open house at five, so they're hoping we can do it in a half hour, which I think we can. So that's my proposal. If that date works with you, that would be Thursday at 3:00 PM at Manchester Marine. And if that doesn't work, we can do some other, some other day and time and probably, I don't think we can do a boat ride, you know, like at four or five because of the darkness, but.
So Thursday at three, Manchester Marine, and what, could you just?
Yeah, boat ride.
Next time, then come back and?
Then come back and go to Pine Street for the site walk at the proposed parking field for the burned down Parks and Recs.
So Manchester and Crockers?
Crockers and Manchester.
So you can see them, I mean.
Do we meet at Manchester Marine or at the Reed Park?
I'm thinking Manchester Marine because it'll be easier, less, less boat ride. Becky, you have your hand up, is that on this?
It is, I, I just, thank you, Ron. And Becky Jakes, this is select board. How many spots are on the boat?
So I asked Brian about that and he says he can accommodate anyone who comes. That's what he said, so. I don't know if that means additional boat rides or what, but he said he could accommodate the public.
That's okay, good. So four o'clock, Manchester Marine?
No, three o'clock.
Reed's Park, Reed Park, thank you.
Three o'clock, three o'clock.
Three o'clock. Manchester Marine, three o'clock. And I'll, I'll, I'll firm that we can get parking there. Otherwise, we, I might change the, to Reed's Park. But I think Manchester Marine has plenty of parking and would accommodate us.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's good with the board. Laura?
So I'm, I'm attentive that day, I'm already planning to be in Cambridge, so I may or may not be able to get back at that hour. This is when the work can go and the weather's right. I'll try, but even if I say now that I can make it, it's all dependent on traffic and.
Well, if you get there at three thirty, we'll pick you up. I don't think we're gonna be going that far. Just let us know. Okay, I'll have Gail, Gail rock and roll with the notice. All right, that's all I had, and now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair, Sarah Creighton, on a special town meeting.
I think everybody knows, but in case you don't, the select board voted last week, whatever day it was, Wednesday, Thursday, to recommend all our articles to the town meetings. So that's good. And the, thank you to Debbie Powers for doing the final edits. Our articles will start with number four. So every article you have is plus one, plus three. We'll get everybody a final copy when, as soon as we have, as soon as she's printed them off and copies have been made. A hard copy, I assume everybody would like one. So they start with article four and go to?
Can we get that on SharePoint? Because there were edits made that night, Monday night.
I'll have them, yeah, I'll have versions up, yeah, the final versions. What I'll probably do is archive it so that they just stay. Unfortunately, on SharePoint, one of the things just aside you can't do is rename folders. You mess this up, any links to those folders. But yes, I'll put them in SharePoint as PDFs. So I think that's the only update there. Then we have, if you work backwards from November fourteenth, there are three cricket dates. But we don't have, this is our last meeting before any of those cricket deadlines. So that's why we, Chris had proposed one cricket article, I think number four, and I wrote number five as just a final summary. We'll put them on SharePoint for us to consider tonight. And then the other week, did you find out if, we had talked about having the table? And Erica, I guess, said she was trying to put the table in the cricket?
I think it's, I think they're able to make it fit perfectly into the?
Whatever format.
Insert, so.
Okay.
Has the table been updated with those couple of changes?
We voted it already.
Yeah, we need to make sure she has the right one.
She has it right.
So the two items that I'd like to talk about tonight are the two cricket articles, four and five. The, wanted to just pull up number four, which is, Chris, you can explain if that was, you drafted that as a straw and board?
I tried to make it as factual and unemotional as possible. The purpose of the article is to inform voters the difference between by right and variances and special permits. And so I just wanted to explain each of those terms because there's some, often some confusion as to what they mean. So that's all I did.
So I know, Mary?
Are we looking for comments?
Yep, you want me to share it? Can you share it?
I can share it, I think.
You want me to edit?
Can you put it on the screen, is that possible?
I can.
There might be others. Where is it in SharePoint?
Some nice meaningful here.
So that the, I think we're sharing here says?
It's cricket article four, should be in our.
Now, where did mine?
All right, I can share it now if you want me to.
Is that up there now?
So I asked that we go with the original because somebody was making edits today. I pulled the article off yesterday. You can't do edits last day. So I would?
Yeah, this is what I pulled off our site, so.
Okay, I can pull up.
I don't away the original.
I can, I have the original that doesn't have any edits, if we want to start with that.
Did all these edits, Christopher, sharing?
I thought I did them yesterday.
So I, and I?
I'm just gonna stop sharing.
It's an open meeting law violation to do that, so.
All right, well, we'll start, we'll start with them.
There is an open law, it's an open law violation to?
You're debating.
To make comments that is giving your opinion on things, yes.
We can start with the?
For all to see.
Yeah, we'll just start with, we have to start with the original.
You asked, can you get, let me share?
That was the purpose of SharePoint was to, for group edits, it was what you asked us to do.
Becky has her hand up.
Becky, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, sorry about that. I just want to clarify that if there's deliberation, that's an open meeting law violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Can I ask Becky a question?
Gary has a question for you, Becky.
So can you put a document on a SharePoint folder and then different members of the board can just add comments to it?
Gary, I would defer to Greg.
We've been doing that via Sue, and Sue's, we've been sending things to the town planner for comments for incorporation. We can do that with Gail, I believe.
Well, let's, if we don't have any confusion, why don't we just work from the original?
Let's go with what you got, yeah, up to here.
And I think, so I can?
Can we move that window, is that possible?
Sorry.
You, you heard it.
That'd be you.
That's me.
Didn't me comment it.
There we go. Oh. Okay.
I'm clicking on the upper right tile in the above room by monitor. That most upper right icon in the left.
That's interesting, because I don't see that online.
Maybe I see it online.
No, you think you have to do it on the thing? There we go.
All right.
Nicely done.
All right, who wants to?
So I would suggest that with the by right, that we add what we're changing to by right. So I would add in the accessory dwelling units and the non-conforming.
Is there a section here? Shouldn't it go in the, yeah, under the proposed zoning changes section?
Well, I think this is what, well, I guess wherever you feel is right to put it, but there's a reason we're defining what by right is, what variance and special permit, I would assume. And so then we're gonna say what we're proposing in the new bylaws that fit into these categories, correct?
Agreed. So what if we added?
Can I suggest on Mary's comment that we, we note the section, but then refer to the table? So we're not stating things twice where there could be an error. The regulations are pretty detailed. So if we say the ones that are going by right are, you know, whatever category you want to say ADU or something, and then you point to, is this gonna go in association with the table?
But they're not in the table yet, it's not voted in yet.
But it's the proposed table, right? I mean?
Yeah, they're only, I don't think that, I think that's too confusing because the proposed table has no changes in, it's now article four.
Right.
Sections one, two, three, four have no changes from the current bylaw. So the, so we are proposing up to twenty accessory dwelling units by right, small, under nine hundred square foot by right. So that's true.
With the non-conforming uses, it's a little more complicated.
Yeah, it's a little more complicated, let's, so.
Yeah.
So it would probably go after this.
You just have to break out the non-conforming, increasing by a hundred percent to building that is non-conforming.
So the, the problem is, the existing bylaw technically allows that. And that's, what we're doing is clarifying the law. What the law currently says is, if a building is non-conforming, you have to get a special permit. And then it says very clearly, a one and two family house is exempt. Now, it doesn't say what parts of that is exempt, it just says it's exempt. So one way of interpreting that is to mean that a one and two family house doesn't have to conform to anything. Or has done, you can make a change to a one and two family by right automatically. But that's too vague also. That's why the proposed zoning language spells out the rules as to when or when not you can do things by right with a non-conforming.
So can I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not clear what you're saying with that, but we're going from needing a special permit for increasing a non-conforming to wanting to do it by right to increase it up to a hundred percent. So that's what we need to put in the by right section.
Well, okay, then, then we have to be very clear as to when you can and when you can't do that.
Correct.
Okay, so let's just do one thing at a time. So I suggest, oops, now I'm not sharing anymore. There we go. The propos, so I'm adding a sentence. The proposed zoning cha-changes, the? Small, under nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling units by right.
Up to twenty-three.
With regula, with new regulations.
Right.
Will allow up to twenty new. Twenty?
Twenty, annually twenty.
What?
Annually, up to twenty.
Will allow. Okay. The proposed zoning changes will allow annually up to twenty new small, under nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling units by right.
Attached.
What do you mean with, with new regulations? What is that?
Well, all the regulations of the building permit oversight and owner occupied certification.
That could be confused, I think that with new regulations clause can be confused with proposed regulations. So we should say what you?
Should we want to say one parking space?
Regulated.
Attached, do we want to say all those things?
In existing, if they meet. Criteria. Including owner occupied, uh, existing building.
Can I just say, I, I don't think this is a good idea.
Yeah.
I think you were here originally going to describe the concepts, what by right is, what a variance is, what a special permit is, in a sort of a neutral fashion. Then you got into proposed zoning changes to give a little snapshot. I think we're just heading into an hour and a half long conversation if we start trying to say, well, which parts of our new proposed zoning bylaws would be considered by right, would be considered needing a variance, would be considered needing special permit. This is gonna be a hard thing to craft right here. Why not stick to the generic terms that you tried to define to begin with?
Well, the, the proposed article does have a section on the proposed zoning changes, so I agree with Mary that we're remiss to not include.
We'll put it in that section then, and don't, don't re-craft every single paragraph.
That's where it's going.
You can't see this.
What?
It was going center, there we go. It's going right here, I think she's writing it. Including, um.
Listen briefly, don't go into great details, we haven't suggested.
Owner occupied. Um, leased.
Attached.
Do you need to go into so much detail?
Within existing home.
Could you just mention it, because the whole rest of our work covers this in detail.
Yeah, it gets into the weeds.
What am I saying, and with meet criteria such as.
Where have I just said?
Or meet criteria in section dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, exactly, it's probably.
Refer to the.
For the back of the section that they want to, I mean.
I think the spring meeting was postponed partly because of outreach. And so if this is our outreach, I think we need to do a little description, not just generic.
It's not gonna be a little description, is the problem.
Well, I think we need to specify what's going on in the appropriate sections. I do think we need to be better at communicating. I, I get emails from residents and neighbors and, and there's a big misconception out there that these zoning bylaws are targeting affordable housing. People think this, these changes are to generate more affordable housing, and they're not. So I think we have to be clear on that and we have to be clear on what we're proposing, so I.
That sounds like another article, maybe a good one, but.
I think it's gonna, and I'm happy to write it, it's, it's very important because I think a lot of people really don't know what's being proposed. And so, you know, it should have been, or maybe it still can be, we take them one by one instead of trying to do it all in one, I don't know, but.
Why do these people come to this drop in now, we have, I don't understand.
So I think we're trying to talk about this article, that we're trying to talk, focus on this article, cricket number four. And when you do the math out, we really, if we want to have two more articles in the cricket, we have, we should discuss them tonight, as painful and challenging as that is. So, we don't.
Do we have to wordsmith everything to the final?
Or we can have a, or we can post, um, work involved to do it. That's what we've, sort of, how we've been operating. But I think that what we've got here for the ADUs are, if, I would add a second sentence, we probably need to wordsmith it slightly, but accessory dwelling units that don't meet those criterias are subject to special permit. Right?
But you want to point them to the section where it's further explained.
Yeah, we haven't done that on any of the other changes, so. So we could say, see article. Those who does do not meet those criteria. Would. Would be subject to.
Special permit.
To the special permit provisions. Yep. I think that is fine, that, it adds a little bit of detail, it's, it's consistent with the.
Lost it, Sarah.
I don't know.
Edit your broadcast.
What does that mean?
What?
If you want that to stay up there, the person that's in charge of that would put that.
Double click on that, Sarah. The big, making it bigger.
Have to run the screen, I think you want.
Is it you run?
I can't hear what he's saying, so I don't know.
Said, you need to double click on the screen.
You need to double click on the quarter.
I can't do that, it's wrong, is it wrong, you think it's you run?
Oh, one that's, we have to turn on the screen.
No.
There you go.
I do. So. So the proposed zoning changes will allow annually up to twenty new small accessory dwelling units by right, if they meet criteria such as located within, okay, such as located within an existing home, owner occupied and leased.
What does an leased mean, that comma's on the wrong place?
Uh, it, it, it's not a border, it has to have, um.
That's confusing.
And. You have to have a lease, that's what the rules say. Subject to a lease, something.
Located within an existing owner occupied home and leased for a period of minimum of six months? I mean, again, I think we're getting into stating what's in the regulation.
It's way too much detail, just reference the law, we have it on the town law.
Well, this is, this is a proposal from Mary, so before we.
Well, and to be clear, I mean, I'm fine with listing out that we're proposing an ADU bylaw that's by right. I'm just trying to clarify, you know, we're all, there's only four major things that we need to clarify. The ADUs, the nonconforming, the senior housing, and the RCC. So I'm fine with either the first page or in the proposed zoning changes that we list out what's by right and what's by special permit that we're proposing. I don't think we're proposing anything for a variance, so I'm not a hundred percent clear why we're defining that.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we've got one paragraph about ADUs, let's follow Mary's thread and try to do three short paragraphs, see where we are.
Yep. Yeah, to see where we are, and then. I think the variant, the nonconforming use is a little bit, as Chris said, more difficult because it's less clear.
Actually, maybe we could do it in a paragraph. I think we could do it in a paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
We'll just say, which the nonconforming use, nonconforming uses which may not be considered by right, but are in section blah, blah, blah of the new proposal, and leave it at that.
If we can't put it in basic language for the people, then.
So an article, an article in the cricket should not point them to a table, on a, in a table.
So let's try this.
Yeah.
So for nonconforming uses, one and two family houses may add additions to their house.
Nonconforming structures.
Just, well, structures, okay, well, it's, it's a lot, that's, the most of the problem is the lot that's nonconforming.
No, but you said nonconforming uses, it's nonconforming structures, like the houses.
We say.
Lots, not uses.
Lots, we'll say lots.
It can be lots or structures, actually.
Or structures, I have, or structures.
Go ahead and try to get the sentence out, Chris, we'll read it for you.
One and two family houses may undertake alterations by right as long as the alterations conform to all dimensional requirements.
Up to a hundred percent.
Up to a hundred percent, yeah, up to a hundred percent. I think that could be wordsmithed a little better.
I think, um, all dimensional requirements?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it, because now, is one family the right word or single family?
Single family, yes, single families.
So.
Did you see that, Sarah?
I'm thinking we can do bullets here, so the proposed modifications to zoning by law include. One, a table that clearly lists all zoning, two.
Can we just allow you to word, to boil the number up later?
Two, annually, allow annually up to twenty, and then three is nonconforming uses, and then four, stronger. Criteria, strong, that we can, we can do the final words first thing, but I think that, stronger.
I would suggest the one, two, three, four be not about a table, but the actual thing that you're regulating.
Maybe just use bullets.
So don't, don't make the table bullet number one.
Well, I think bullets are better. So then they're not prioritizing anything. I think we do need to, we were wordsmithed this a little bit, but. Okay, and then. Include one. One new use that could be just senior housing that could be approved by.
Special permit.
Yeah.
So. Inside file review.
Special permit process.
Say that again?
Approved by special permit process.
New use, I'm gonna put comma, senior housing facilities. Okay.
And then the, there's the nonconforming one, which the change of use, which is a special permit.
That's, that's an existing bylaw.
You can't do a change of use.
Yes, you can.
Sure can, with special permit.
Six point one point nine.
No, that's, that's Tappan Street, that they.
I know, read it, it exists, it's pretty much a byver, verbatim.
I'm not following you, but that's what the bylaw says.
Six point one point nine.
I'm pretty sure it's six point one point nine.
Read it to us, Mary.
Well, I have the old one, is it the new six point one?
Read the old.
Nonconforming use is the six.
I don't have a six point one point nine.
No, six point one, I got a new one.
Maybe it's not six point one point nine. Maybe it's, and that's from my memory.
So you're saying the ZBA didn't know what they were doing?
We're not gonna say that.
Six point one point nine?
I'm never gonna say that.
It may, I may be the wrong number, six point one something.
Nine, get, you ready?
Well, it's not six point one point nine, what is it?
Six point one point two.
Oh, sorry.
That's not good.
No, right there.
In front of you, you gonna read it or mine?
You can read it, I'll read along.
A nonconforming structure or use may be changed, extended, or altered, provided that in each case, the Board of Appeals grants a special permit. Therefore, after finding a such change, extension, alteration is not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. Now, here's the second sentence. The above requirement does not apply to such an extension, alteration, or reconstruction, or structural change to a single family or two family residential structure that does not increase the nonconforming nature of that structure. And that's why it's vague, and that's why we're adding all these rules to allow it to happen.
But the first part of that is pretty much identical to the proposed language.
That's not Tappan Street, Tappan Street was proposing six units. So this extension or this exclusion is to a single or two family, which they were not proposing.
Yeah, that's correct, it doesn't, yeah, Tappan.
Like, I mean, the conversation was, we have it, which the answer is, we don't have it.
Yeah, actually, we do.
You can change the use from something to a single or two family.
A nonconforming structure or use may be changed.
Yeah.
Provided that in each case, the Board of Appeals, so Tappan Street was some warehouses that were, the use is being changed to residential. So it was allowed by special permit.
Well, the union, not residential.
Residential use.
Yep. The point being, we have, it's the same language in the new one as that language, which is relevant to this article. So we're not changing that piece. But we are doing, as we, as we just described, nonconforming lots and structures and one and two family houses may undertake alterations by right as long as the proposed alterations conform to all dimensional requirements, up to a hundred percent increase in the special building area. We should add, if they don't do that, or whatever, they're going to need a special permit.
These are special permit or variance.
Right. If not. If those criteria are not met.
The order missing is special permit or variance.
A special. Permit or variance may be required. Alright, I think those are good and forthright changes.
So just as clarification, are you saying that putting in the language, changing from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use is clarifying the language and not changing it? That's changing it.
Changing what, I don't understand the question.
So we say here, you know, a nonconforming structure or use may change, extended, but we don't say that you can change from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming.
You can, yes, as long as that new use is less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Under the current bylaw.
So for example, if you have an art gallery in a residential area and you want to change it to a gas station, that's a more detrimental use, and so you won't get that approved.
But no.
But if you have a gas station, you want to change it to an art gallery, then you could get a special permit. Now, the Board of Appeals might not grant it, but you could apply for it.
Subjective, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think that this strengthens this article, I'm happy to wordsmith it and get it off the cricket.
I had a few more things.
Okay.
So under special permits, there's just a typo that says, the second set, I'm gonna check that anyway. Yeah, um, the second sentence, this is a useful tool for the town, that's it.
Gary, and of course, you also had some proposed edits with a substantive.
How does it intervariance for a building proposals that violate a zoning law? To me, violate isn't the correct word, I don't think you can violate something if it isn't actually there yet. So I maybe don't comply with zoning requirements.
What one?
The first sentence under variance.
Building projects that are not allowed, the only.
I have for building. It says proposals that violate zoning law, I don't think a proposal could violate it. I think it needs to say proposals that do not comply with zoning requirements. That's wrong.
Looking for the word violate, I don't see it. That may have been in, that may have been in the changes, so, I've gone back to the original. I don't see the word violate.
Yeah, that must have.
No?
No. For building projects that are not allowed.
Or that do not comply.
That are not allowed, that doesn't, that's not clear.
No.
Is it, are we under special permits here?
This is under variance, for building projects that.
I, I have written, for building proposals that violate a zoning law.
Uh, isn't it that they don't comply with zoning?
It's about a proposal that viol, that would violate a zoning law, a variance is required, that's more succinct.
So you could say proposals that would violate a zoning law.
That would violate a zoning law, a variance is required from the ZBA. That actually might be required from the planning board, depending on the proposal, but you could say the zoning Board of Appeals or the planning board.
My point is, I don't think you can violate something if it's not in existence.
But that do not, that, that would not comply.
No, it's about a proposal, you can make a proposal that would require a variance.
Doesn't comply with zoning, just.
For proposed buildings that do not, that would not comply with zoning, the only alternative. the only alternative is a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals.
Buildings and uses.
It's, it's projects and uses, right? Projects. Okay. Uh, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Laura.
Could you go to by right? So by right doesn't imply, by right allows property owner to obtain.
So.
Allows.
By right allows a property owner to obtain.
Get rid of that.
Change can to.
Okay.
I'm looking at the printed one, which is different, so stop there for a moment.
Can I get a motion to submit cricket article number four and authorize me to do a final wordsmithing?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I guess the, that substance to me is a little weak, I don't have the, I have the originals up here, right? Without having to go through any kind of public review or approval process, and honestly, you're, you don't have any recourse. You don't have any, any kind of appeal. I think that's.
That's exactly right.
So I think we need to tell them that.
Well, you can appeal a building permit, you could.
Yeah, he has administrative review.
The building permit. Isn't the, isn't the same thing as a special permit appeal.
No, but it is an administrative, but there is an appeal.
No.
Sure, somebody gives, the city grants a, you know, a building permit to a project, that's not allowed.
There are two different permits, you don't have a building permit saying, yes, the, what you're proposing here can be structurally built, and it's safe and sound, and it meets building code. The, where there is on your lot is different. Two different appeals.
But the, this is saying that by right, if I want, if I have a, um, if I want to do a building permit in my home to make a new kitchen, or if I want to put in, um, that I, I have the ability to go get a building permit and do it. And the neighbors don't get to say anything. Similarly, um, if I comply with all zoning requirements, I can put on a dormer, or build a barn, or whatever. And I can go get a building permit, it's my by right to go get the building permit, and my neighbors don't get to say whether they like how it looks or not. Cheryl, I think we're, somebody's standing, you.
What is difference in this bylaw is that an aggrieved party no longer has standing to address that.
With what?
The by right bylaws.
Where, where, it's not changed.
There are no by right bylaws.
Where's, what's, what is the change that does that?
So if you're changing accessory dwelling units from currently needing a special permit to allowing by right, that's taking out the special permit process, which means you don't have a butter notification, you don't have.
Correct, that's true.
Neighborhood, um, input, and then if, if a party is aggrieved, you do not have an appeal process that you can go to courts, land courts, or to, um, you know, argue your case if you feel so aggrieved. So there, you remove, this is removing that process. It's just a simple stating the facts.
It is for that particular use, yes, that's right.
Okay, so, um.
Same with the nonconforming one that we just did.
Same with the nonconforming.
This is sort of redundant.
So it's just good to be clear that what by right means is it means.
Well, I thought this, so what, what needs to be changed about the by right?
I think Christine was just saying that, you know, it's saying that you don't get a butters notice, you don't get this, and it's just adding you don't have an appeal process.
Okay, so do we don't, notification to other, or to public notice requirements? We don't need all the, I mean, it's, it's kind of redundant there.
Exactly, notification to a butters. And.
Or, or appeal in land court. There's, there's, without having to go through any kind of review or approval process, uh, public, public review, review. And without any, without appeal to land court. I mean, that's fine, that's fact, it's, if you comply with zoning, that's.
Without.
Sarah, Greg, fetish bill has his hand up.
Yeah, I'm gonna. I'm just gonna delete this sentence, because I think it's totally redundant. Um, and without, sorry. Um, yeah, go ahead, Greg.
So just to clarify, any decision of the building inspector for, for a building permit is appealable to the zoning Board of Appeals.
We've already seen that, yeah, this is different.
So, it is, it is a different process, but it is appealable, so it's not, it's not accurate to say that a by right use is not appealable, it is appealable. It is a different process, for sure.
Well, that's why you're putting land court.
So, um, I'm not sure if that, wordsmithed by right allows property, a property owner to obtain a building permit to construct or alter a building without having to go through any kind of public review or approval process, and without appeal to land court, that such permits can be appealed to the zoning Board of Appeals. Um, yes?
So the second part of that paragraph.
Yes.
Context is that construction or renovation of single-family homes are currently allowed by right, and, uh, this is sort of the basis of how, um, home building happens.
Right.
In a single-family district town.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, um, any other comments? Sure, save this.
We'll call.
We'll call, I guess.
Yes.
Yes.
Greg, uh, Gary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, thank you, um, seven to nothing.
Sarah, huh?
Okay, um, and then we have a second one that, um.
I haven't yet, and I can try to call it.
I would rather not see articles published than to try to wordsmith here as a group. To me, this.
I think we're so close.
The second one is pretty straightforward.
The second one is very close, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we do do that, because then we have all looked at it, and we, I think we're better for. And this is the practice we've been doing with the other four articles that have gone in the cricket, so let's not stop, let's not create a new process.
The other thing we talked about is a table, we were gonna put that simplified table in.
Yeah, we've already voted that, and Chris is working to getting sure that Erica can, he asked, he asked her, he hasn't heard back for sure. So we have the table.
Not, not the X, not the use table, the table that's simplified.
Yeah, no, it's, not the use table, it's the matrix table.
The matrix that we had at the open house.
Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah, yes.
We, we're talking about both now, the use table and the other.
The use table isn't going anywhere.
No, the use table's not going anywhere.
Just the matrix.
Matrix. Yeah, no, no, sorry. So we have three week, three crickets, we just approved cricket four. We have the use, the, uh, matrix, the matrix. And then we have cricket five, because we don't have any other meetings, I mean, we have another, we don't have any other meetings.
Well, I wanted to talk about that, but go ahead.
But, um, scheduled, so if we can get these done, then we can be done. So, uh, comments on proposed cricket number five, which I have now. Uh, I don't have that on the screen, because we stopped sharing and then reshare again.
Is that the one that says the proposed zoning changes, one, two, three, four, five?
This is it, right here.
That's it.
So this would be the last one before town meeting, um.
It's just a summary.
Here's the summary.
I have some.
Okay. And we can take the language from the prior one, actually.
Well, okay. So number two, it says strengthen a broader number of types of oversight by moving several provisions to the general bylaws where then have.
Where they have, thank you.
Where they, um.
Clarify performance-based answer. And I think we get, uh, just get rid of that.
Yes.
Uh, I was gonna, okay, modification in that sense, but I don't wanna, go ahead, Mary, I just, I'll come back to number two.
Well, yeah, I, are you talking about number three?
No, I was talking about number two.
Yeah, you can go with number three.
Okay, number two, clarify performance-based requirements for the site plan review of special permits. I think that will help people understand.
If there should be an and, that's an incomplete sentence, uh, for a site.
Because the performance-based requirements that we've changed are specifically directed.
Specifically to site, site plan review.
That would clarify.
Can I, I can put an and there?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I don't have track changes on.
It's okay.
Okay.
So I, I guess, so this falls under the category, category, the proposed zoning changes, and then at number three, it says provide for very small new housing accommodations such as in-law apartments that are within existing single-family homes. Blah, blah, blah. I mean, we already have that, what, what we're proposing is to change it from a special permit to by right.
Okay.
So I think we have to be clear of what we're proposing.
So I would add at the end, only if they meet new specific criteria, that would clarify it. Because that's what the law's about. New specific criteria. And I would suggest clarifying number four, expanding it slightly. Okay?
Remember bear for.
So I'm still, I'm still, no, I'm not.
You finished there?
Okay. That needs a wordsmithing as well, but. Maybe I'm gonna ask Laura to wordsmith this one. She's good at that. But anyway, okay, opportunity for senior housing within Manchester with neighbor input and rigorous overview through the special permit process, can I say that?
So to be consistent, allow the opportunity for senior housing facilities within Manchester.
I have some wording for that sentence, too. For that section. With, with neighborhood input, specific deed restriction requirements, and special permission, special permit review.
So.
Neighborhood.
With neighborhood input, comma. Specific deed restriction requirements.
What's that?
I mean, a nursing home doesn't need a deed restriction.
I know that we have that in the special, in the senior housing.
They have to be over fifty, and that has to be done in a deed.
Nursing home doesn't need to be over fifty.
Fifty-five, yeah, nursing home does not.
Assisted living facilities don't have to be.
Do we have due restrictions in our proposed bylaw?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
No.
But it's the only way you can get age.
That would be a criteria of the special permit, not, it's not in the bylaw.
And special permission, special permit review.
And rigorous review by special permit, is that okay?
But this was geared towards the age restriction.
Okay, um, I think Mary had some more, let's, let's let her finish.
No, it's fine if it's on that same, so, are we done with four?
I think so.
With five, I would just take out, um, the last part where it's saying without a time-consuming special permit that is currently routinely granted. I don't think our current special permit process is time-consuming for the ZBA, so.
Very much is.
But it's, it's, it's an opinion, with, it's an opinion that we're trying to stay away from opinions, right?
Well, no, I mean, it takes months, we know that, from history.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it does take, it's a month just to advertise it.
Allow changes to existing ham of the decline with zoning.
I was only zoning it for three years, it takes months.
Can I, can I say we're allowing some changes, because it's not all changes, it's certain circumstances, it's.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So changes in some instances. Because we, we elist certain criteria. Changes to existings, uh.
Allow certain changes.
Allow certain changes. That's where I started.
So the sentence.
This should just start with strength, then.
What about the time-consuming special permit?
Why is that taken out?
Because that, if these are bullets, strengthen updated bylaws. Making them consistent.
Wait, given, given during.
Given. Okay.
Change that seven PM to six thirty.
Oh, is it six thirty? Greg, is it six thirty?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I would be late.
Reservation, uh, conservation cluster requiring special permit in site plan review.
I was, I was sort of thinking we didn't have to go through the, every single one of the changes, to sort of give the, the highlights.
I think there's four. I think we should do residential conservation cluster, there's only four, two changes.
To encourage, uh.
Okay.
To allow, to, or to enable. Preservation special, can't even get the word out. Residential conservation clusters, R C C. With site plan review. Required by special permit to encourage.
Open space.
Open space.
To encourage more environmentally responsible development patterns. So isn't it, isn't allow, uh, isn't it allow residential concerts that, that meet?
With, with, oh, I think we said with detail, something like with detailed, uh, site plan review before.
Yeah, okay, that meet relevant.
Don't, don't we currently have a cluster zoning bylaw?
Yes, we do.
And we're not really allowing this, it's not a new use, we're just modifying.
Right, we're modifying, modifying, yeah, modifying.
We're modifying our current cluster bylaw to.
To decrease the.
To be more flexible, and with the goal of obtaining, of obtaining more open space.
And allow. Well, and current, and then allowing it in every district, which we currently don't do.
And with special permit.
Or special permit.
And with special permit, site plan review.
So it's kind of the subdivision control law without allow, without needing frontage.
No.
Ooh, Mary, that's an opinion.
No, it's not. No, that's not an opinion.
Yes, it is.
Not true.
It's not true, there's.
How is that an opinion?
Because you're making a judgment there.
Well, isn't the residential conservation clust- cluster saying you don't need the frontage for, like, if you have three houses?
Nothing to do with frontage, it has to do with the lot sizes.
Exactly, so you don't need the frontage.
So it's not frontage. You could have the frontage, you don't have to.
But that's my point.
But that's not a change.
That's not a change, either.
That's not a change, that's, that's the same as right now, if you have five or more acres and one house lot's worth of frontage, you can propose a residential conservation cluster.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
So I think that is true, but it is not a change.
Well, it's a change with the lot size of the district.
Lot size, it's a change with the lots, allowed lots size, does not, it's, it's just we're taking away the minimum lot size. That's the only change we're really making.
Well, it's a minimum.
And adding all the districts, because we only let it in C and E.
It's not the lot sizes. It's not the lot size, it's the acreage of the site.
Right, the minimum site.
The lot is where the houses are built, or they're there all the time.
Right, right, the minimum site.
Yeah.
To allow it in every district by special permit, and reduce.
Lot size.
The minimum. What do we, what is it, the minimum, what'd you just say?
Minimum. Minimum lots, minimum.
Well, it was two acres before, or five acres.
It was five acres.
Five acres.
To, I think we should, um, to eliminate the five-acre minimum required.
Yeah.
Eliminate five acres and require.
The minimum.
The minimum.
No, we're eliminating the five-acre required.
Yeah, that's all, because we're still, still requiring all of the other sections.
Still has to be twice the dimensional size.
But that's good, yeah. Okay, I'd like to take a motion for.
Please, one more cop, not so fast. Preamble, top line. Next week's special town meeting will consider a number of zoning bylaw changes, more, more than three years period. The select board has voted to recommend all of these to the town meeting.
We knew we had you here for some reason.
And the final sentence, I think we should give them a heads up that this may go into two evenings. I mean, that has been discussed and very likely. People don't know about it and you're not giving them a heads up, they're not gonna be prepared to show up a second night.
Becky, you have a question?
Let's take, can we just, can we just finish on Christine's comment before?
Well, maybe it's on the comment.
Is it relevant to them?
It is.
It is, okay.
It's on Christina's comment, she is correct. I, Alan was making that suggestion as well.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, can I take a motion for Cricket article number five, and can I ask Laura to wordsmith this one? We have a couple weeks.
Okay. It'll be this week, I'm not available next week.
Okay.
So moved.
Second? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, I think we can just vote this. Okay, seven to nothing, yeah, excellent, thank you very much, that's great, we got those done, we were, we promised the select board that we would do four, so we did five. Plus the matrix, if they can do that, so that's, I think that's all I have.
All right, thanks, just on a couple administrative things, I got an email today from Sue Croft, there's, the town is offering SharePoint lessons, anyone interested in that, I could forward you the information.
Sure, depending on the window.
I'll send it to you, Gary.
All tails.
Interested in learning about SharePoint?
Yes, Gary, you.
You should.
Need to know.
Sure.
Yeah, because you should, can you forward it to all of us?
Everybody, I'll send it to everyone.
And then there was also the other seminar on.
That training, I wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, that's on the tenth, right, when you're ready, Ron?
I don't, there's a bunch of things floating around.
Okay, just on a couple of other administrative things, so approval of the minutes, the ten-three minutes was more of a workshop minutes, the three of us, so I think if we want, I, that we approve.
Yeah, we.
Second.
Third.
And the three of us can vote.
All in favor, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing, I, I think we should schedule, and not maybe have one, but for November seventh, and then at five thirty, and before the town meeting. Just schedule those meetings, in case there's an emergency, we have them posted, so my suggestion is to have one on the seventh, and then on the, before town meeting at five thirty, is anybody object to that?
So, can you say that, so meeting on the seventh?
Just, just schedule it, and then we can cancel unless some, if something comes up, then we'd be, and I would suggest that that one starts at five thirty, ahead of the select board meeting on that day.
But we hope to, we anticipate, yeah.
Well, hopefully done, but if it, something comes up, you know, something crazy, we're done, we're, we're on board, so.
Yep, makes sense.
Can we put these in SharePoint?
I will.
We've talked about that.
Put them on the agenda, and I'll, I'll, I'll write them up to, I'll send you an email, everyone on these proposed dates, how's that?
Because we have the SharePoint calendar, right?
Um, yeah, if you use it. Not great at it, but I'll, maybe I should.
I can put one right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we could all help, but it'd be nice to rely on it, if it was.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that for a while.
Where are you putting them on the agenda, if it's helpful?
Try to get them on the agenda, so.
I am not gonna commit to November seventh, I can't necessarily be available for that meeting, but go ahead and schedule it.
All right, SharePoint, everyone, and I think that's all I had, just a reminder that we've now scheduled the public, the sidewalk.
Boat ride, you mean?
Boat ride, Laura.
You had sent around an email about a few different trainings, one of them is on different topics that apply to the planning board and ZBA. Some of them have already gone by, certain ones are of interest, I certainly can't make all of them, and I wondered if there was interest in people kind of signing up to take one that might be a topic they're interested in, and then we're at least increasing the board's technical knowledge on some of these issues. And I can volunteer to take the site plan review.
Oh, great.
Which is the same day of jury duty, so assuming I can get home in time from jury duty, I would take it. It's in December sixth.
I'll revisit that and offer my, see if there's something I would.
There were, there was, there were like five or six different topics, they were all pretty relevant, I mean, there were zoning changes, which were already mostly slogged through. There's also a modest cost to this, so I don't know if the town can.
Uh, yeah, I think it's fifteen dollars or something.
It's like twenty-five or thirty, I think.
Yeah, Sue, last time I did one, I didn't reimburse, but you can go to, I think Sue has a budget for it, or I guess through Gail now, we can do, it's from admin funds, we can get reimbursed.
Get reimbursed, okay. I don't have it memorized, but you had it on the email tonight, I think it just went around tonight, and maybe if people wanna take a look at which.
Okay.
Might be relevant, that would be a nice way to get a little bit of technical training.
Yeah, why don't we do that, if you pick one, then we'll send, send it around to everyone that, you know, I'm taking this one.
That just sparked my memory and my previous conversations of the planning board budget, can we put that on the next agenda, to maybe recreate that now that there is no one person in charge of a planning department budget, perhaps we should.
I have to get what's, you mean, want me to get from Greg as to what's left?
We used to have a budget, and then we had the budget, I think there were some accounting issues.
So we have the town meeting, this topic.
Well, just make sure that it lines with Greg and what that process is.
And Laura, did you have, go ahead.
I was gonna say, also, the planning board webpage needs to be updated for contacts.
That's a good point, maybe all the emails need to go to Gail. Or you.
Or you, Ron.
Okay, so it still says Sue? There's a lot of, there's a lot of changes in that website, Sue's name is in there a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, that's research in their place, I'll talk to Tiffany. Any other admin stuff, or any other items before we take our boat ride?
Well, I, I guess we are done with the articles, but I, what I had mentioned before about the affordable housing piece, how are we getting that message out to people that this is not about affordable housing?
I'm not sure we can, maybe Laura must get individually writing articles. If you'd like, I could take a shot and send it to you, Mary, and you can edit it or replace it.
Yeah, if we just do it individually, we don't have to get the planning board okay.
Well, why don't we take it through the same process that all the other articles have come through?
We're not gonna meet again before. Isn't it well?
Well, we do have a half hour before the public, so we're meeting at six thirty at the public hea, for the public hearing, but we do have a half hour of stuff we can do before it starts at seven, so.
So even Thursday, could you get something by Thursday? This Thursday? Yes, Mary, this Thursday.
Are we meeting this Thursday?
No, we're not, that's just a sidewalk, we can't.
Well, we could post it to talk about it.
Oh, oh, I see.
We're on, well, we'll have a, I don't know if we'll have time, because that boat ride.
Oh, we may not be able to, because it needs to be public, never mind.
We have to get, we have to get to the sidewalk, because the DPW has an open house, I don't know what that means, but they have to be.
When is the next meeting?
Our next meeting is the special, is November fourth, I'm sorry, November ninth.
Ninth, we, and you suggested.
And we have a half hour before that public hearing, to do whatever your business.
I mean, you suggested posting for the seventh if we needed it, you just suggested that, I put it on the calendar while you were.
So if it's small stuff, we can do stuff before the ninth, before the, before the town, before the public.
But that's not time for an article, we won't be able to.
I don't think we can.
No, no, there won't be enough time, you're right, so maybe we can do the seventh.
Zoom in with the public.
I'm gonna suggest, can I just challenge the notion, we have been affirmative, and here are the changes, and we just strengthened our two articles to say we're doing these things. So, I, I think, you know, there are a lot of things we're not doing. I mean, we're not regulating house color, we're not changing the historic district, we're not changing districts. I mean, I think that one of the things, we're not, we're not making districts, you know, we're not changing the residential districts in any way, except for those specific ways that we just discussed, we're not changing the limited commercial, there's a whole bunch of things we're not doing. And some of the things that we're not doing are things that various people have asked, we've got a list of the, you know, April town meetings opening changes. We didn't get rid of inclusionary zoning, it turns out, I just realized today, I mean, so to, to single out.
We didn't get to do that?
No, we, we forgot to do that. So, anyway, I don't believe we did, I checked today. So, anyway, there are a whole bunch of things we're not doing, so to call out, I think the affordable housing is an important issue that a lot of people are focused on, but to say, I, I think it's a, it's a complicated issue.
Well, it's talking about what we're doing in the negative, everything else we said is.
Right, and we're doing a whole bunch of things for the diversity of housing, we're doing a few small things, actually, for the diversity of housing question.
Yeah, and we're doing some senior housing.
And senior housing.
And residential conservation.
Anyway.
I, I don't.
So I just think that to, to pull one issue that we're.
I'm not pulling one issue, I'm just saying, you know, I've had at least seven people mention that to me, so I'm, no, nobody's meant, mentioned house colors, that's why I didn't bring that up.
No, I, I, that was extreme. So, I was trying to make it extreme.
So, but I'm, I'm happy to write something on my own, but, but I just looked up inclusionary housing nine point four, and there is no nine point four, so.
What version are you looking at?
The latest.
How is it?
Oh, it's ninth.
I don't know, I'll have to go back and look at the warrant.
So it's in the.
It's, it's numbered nine point three.
It's in the table, it, it's what?
It's numbered as nine point three, and there, erroneously, that's the wrong.
Can I make a suggestion on the affordable housing? And I know we just signed off on this article, but where we said, the, we just added a clause about conservation clusters, which is, I think, the only place we actively do something about affordable housing right now. We could add a sentence to that that says, and the residential conservation clause allows, you know, allows a density bonus, or however we wanna word it, for affordable housing. Currently, this is the only place in the proposed regulations where affordable, capital A, affordable housing is addressed.
That's a good suggestion.
Well, not if we have the inclusionary housing bylaw, then we're covered for everything.
Senior housing deleting all nine point three and replacing with a new nine point three.
No. Inclusionary zoning?
Well, it's a whole section.
No, we never got, we never put that in. No, nine point three was never officially renumbered, came up because we're doing nine point three as a senior housing.
So now we're gonna have to do two nine point threes?
No, we're gonna, Greg and I talked about this today, I, I think it's a typo in that version because we never deleted it and we never renumbered it, I went back through the warrants today, so. Someone, someone was fixing that one and made a change to change it from nine point four, the correct thing is nine point three blank. So that's why senior housing is nine point three, because Greg was making, checking and saying, why don't we, why shouldn't senior housing be nine point four, and I said.
Do we have confirmation that all this bylaw changes have gone out to the other towns that?
Yes, we, we confirmed that a long time ago.
Including me, people that I had.
Yep.
Do we have copies of it?
We have the, I have, I have confirmation from Sharon, and with this, and I've gone through with Greg, the form seven.
Give me Gail.
Nope, Greg, Sharon sent them.
Sharon George, okay.
Sharon George sent them, and I have email confirmation that she sent them all, I sent them to this, I sent them to that, and I've got, talked to Greg, and he and I went through the form that goes to the attorney general, and we went through every single line and confirmed that we are in compliance.
When did they send them?
Before the public hearing. That's, the requirement is before the public hearing.
What's the story on this, are we doing anything with this?
You mean like six months ago?
Under six months ago. May seventeenth.
Yes.
That is the requirement on the form, he and I went through every line, it's called Form seven. We, I sat with him, like, in person.
I'll try to.
Because I didn't wanna get to the end and say.
Oh, I messed up things, I don't think, we never actually reviewed that, though.
No, I don't think we've reviewed it, so.
So it shouldn't be on the website, but can we, can I, I'm sorry, Laura, can I just finish this, is inclusionary housing gonna stay in our bylaws or not?
I believe that it is, that we are doing nothing about it at this town meeting.
So what is senior housing gonna be, if it's not nine point three, what's it gonna be?
It is my opinion that one of two things happened, we either deleted it, but I don't think we did, it should, it's more, it should, that's a typo, it should be nine point four. If I'm wrong about that, there'll be two nine point threes, it's not the only place we have two sections that have the same number. And it's my, my quick read on the warrant from last November that we did not renumber it, so it should have been, remained nine point four.
Greg, you have a clarification?
Nine point three blank is what it should be, so.
Greg, you have a clarification on this?
Yeah, well, Sarah just said, so, so currently, nine point three is blank, and nine point four is inclusionary zoning.
Right.
It was incorrectly labeled as nine point three, and half of the bylaw that was retyped.
Right.
But, but it shows it as nine point four in an earlier section of that same bylaw, so it's a typo in numbering. But currently, the correct version is that nine point three is blank, nine point four is inclusionary zoning, and you're proposing a new nine point three, which is senior housing.
Correct, and we have not touched, we have not addressed the inclusionary zoning problem. We intended to, but we got busy doing other things.
So, Greg, are you saying the current bylaw, I mean, it's not blank, obviously, so are you saying that this is gonna be renumbered?
The inclusionary zoning will be renumbered as nine point four, which is what the amendment was when inclusionary zoning, when, when the renumbering was, was effectuated.
And we struck nine point three, whatever that was, at least. I only looked at it early curfew, I'm quick to this afternoon, but I think that's the case. So. So the point, so I think Laura makes a good point to include a, a in that Cricket article number four, to say that residential conservation cluster adds a incentive for affordable housing, comma, this is the only change that we're proposing that specifically addresses big A affordable. That's, I think that's a good suggestion, so do we need to?
Is that part, is this the one I'm wordsmithing?
Yes. Is everybody in agreement on that addition?
Yeah, so I mean, that's six units or more, which is what we currently have as well.
I think the point of that article is an overview, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it shows that there's, that we're doing something, but not.
Not very much.
Not, right, not very much.
I get, and I. So no, I was gonna say, I don't wanna beat it, but, but we already have that, so it's not a change.
We didn't have that.
You could pay. It is a change, you could pay.
Yeah.
Which we took out.
Which is what we still have in this inclusionary housing.
No, we don't, we don't have that, you can pay.
Can move.
It says shall require one.
In the, in the proposed.
There's no option, shall's a big word.
I think what she's saying is about the inclusionary zoning, it's a section of.
Still in here.
Nine point four does allow. I think what she's saying is about the inclusionary zoning section, 9.4 does allow that.
Right.
Yes, but that's, but the residential conservation cluster-
So it's still in here.
The cluster, you can't-
We took it out in the residential conservation. We took out the ability to pay in the, it's currently in the residential conservation cluster. We took that out.
Why?
And that is the only proposed zoning change that explicitly addresses capital A affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yep.
Yeah.
I would have to read it, but so... Which is the higher tier, the inclusionary zoning bylaw or the RCT?
Exactly. There are a conflict at this point, then.
Which one, which one, do you, excuse me, we're all under the desk. So which one is?
I'd have to read them.
You know.
I think we intended to take out the inclusionary zoning. I think there was agreement, but we, for this moment.
But I think we're in a bit of a pickle because of what we're not, somebody could come in and say, well, I want to pay, as opposed to be-
And we say, well, you're getting a special permit, we're not gonna allow you to.
Well, but they'll say, but 9.3 lets me, so I'm applying under 9.3.
9.3 lets, but it doesn't require us to.
So I think what we need, it's an oversight for this group that we didn't take it out, but we have it on the list for next time, number one.
Along with topographical clearing, land clearing and a letter.
Okay. All right, so no one would be surprised if Mary decided to write an article between now and town meeting? I mean, I'm just... She'll be surprised.
She's got the whole, sort of, the relationship.
Yeah, I mean, we all have that, right? I'm just saying, it doesn't sound like Mary. I'm speaking for you, but just, so we're all on the same page if we're not meeting again.
Right, I mean, is it a, is it a, Mary, you're a good writer and you're very clear. Are we, is our process that this is a letter from a planning board member? Or is this an article by the letter?
No, it's an article written by her person.
Yeah.
All right, Gail, can we get an email out to the applicants and that the site visits have been scheduled for Thursday and including Byden and St. Pierre and Manchester Marine and everybody who uses parking lot and, or you want me to do that tonight? I'll do it. Okay.
Thanks, Ron.
Oh, Bobrowski, did we want to have him at town meeting or no?
Um, we did not talk about it. It's, I'll, I'll make a motion that, on that topic.
I was just gonna say, it's kind of embarrassing that we just paid all this money and-
I'd like to have him, you'd like to have him there?
Yes.
My feeling is that he has demonstrated the last time he came to us that he didn't, hadn't read the bylaws. That we had tweaked. I think he has a lot of knowledge about the substance of it, but I think he's-
What about town council instead?
Yes, I think town council is-
Well, they'll be there, I mean.
I would rather have Mark, I mean, town council will be there anyhow, but I would like to have Mark Bobrowski.
I mean, what else is that saying?
Knows the subject matter very, very well.
I don't think he knows Manchester's subject matter. He hasn't been to a meeting in, since May.
That's true. There's some case law things that may come up, but-
I think that we, town council can weigh in on this.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as precedent and what other, you know, whether this is in the context of other towns, I think it's helpful to have him there. Have we asked him?
No, we haven't, that's the thing.
That was part of his contract.
We ought to ask him.
If we need to ask him, we need to see if it's scheduled, even if, you know, actually, I would bring it in.
Well, aside from his schedule, I think we need to ask him with time for him to review what is written. So we don't put him on the spot without knowledge of, because we have made changes.
Yeah.
So, I didn't have this as a topic, or I don't have this as a-
It would be helpful to have him if he has time to review.
It's a part of his contract, I believe, that's how I understand it. That was his commitment.
He's out of that contract.
Well, he's not an hourly now. We do have some money left, correct?
I, yes, so he's out of that contract. It's hourly. My vote would be that we don't waste more town funds on having him get up to speed on something he has not been a part of.
Greg, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, so, so Mr. Bobrowski is prepared to attend. Town, town council will either need to send another specialist as a zoning specialist, or we could have Bobrowski. Town council recommends to have Mr. Bobrowski as he is the preeminent zoning lawyer in the state of Massachusetts. So they would recommend and prefer to have Mr. Bobrowski. Now, if your preference is to have someone else, they will send someone else. The dollar, the dollars will be the same, paying either for a specialist from KP, the zoning specialist from KP in addition to regular town council, or paying for a regular town council and Mr. Bobrowski.
Wow. So it's up to us.
We keep asking KP Law for the last four months of opinions. Mr. Bobrowski has not been involved, so.
I would say our town council fails to give us good direction or clear direction time and time and time again. Mark Bobrowski is, in my opinion, I've known him for decades, he is preeminent scholar, one of the preeminent scholars of zoning bylaws. And I, I, I would move that we have, ask him to come and attend town meeting. Maybe we could ask preliminarily. You could find out how many hours he might charge to come up to speed with our bylaws.
He already has, he reviewed the last version you had. He is up to speed on what you have proposed.
Very good. There you go.
Good.
We did.
Yeah, I think it would be about a fad.
So can I make a motion that we ask him to come without further discussion?
Is a motion, I ask Bobrowski to come to town meeting. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion debated, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
No.
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 Motion passes 4-3. Greg, would you follow up with Bobrowski or should I?
I can do that one.
Okay.
Given that, given that, I'd like to suggest that Chris and I have a phone conversation with Mr. Bobrowski to tell him what we've changed from his, like-
Yeah.
And he should get this package.
Taken out Medford and-
Yeah, don't tell him to go on.
He's supposed to go first.
I think also Alan should have a conversation with him about what the expectation are of Manchester's town meeting.
Good points. Why don't I move that Sarah and Chris have a pre-call with Bobrowski and include Alan Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unless Greg has an issue with it.
Is there room for discussion? You didn't know?
That's fine.
Sorry, discussion.
I think that that type of thing should happen at a planning board meeting where all members can be part of that. That should have been part of the, the schedule and the process. I, I, I don't think it's appropriate.
We're going into town meeting. This has been a several-year process and this is gonna, it's gonna happen at the last minute again. Like, this shouldn't be an open meeting conversation with all of us here. Why aren't we all on the same page if we don't have another meeting? Why aren't, is, why isn't the entire planning board on the same page?
Haven't been on the same page for a while.
No.
Well, I would say that I don't see any problem with two planning board members discussing something with him about the substance that's written, printed, and completely voted on by the planning board. There's nothing else to discuss. There's nothing nefarious that could happen. You're talking about facts.
We're not gonna be changing anything.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody talked to nefarious. We're, I'm clearly stating that that is a process that should get all of the planning board members up to speed for town meeting and to engage with Bobrowski or whatever attorney on, on a, a level playing field that we can all share our thoughts and ideas.
So we should have done that with town council, then?
We should have done it with somebody.
With anyone, so.
Isn't this, he's there in a kind of resource capacity if questions come up?
Right.
Um, I think-
The moral of security is blanket, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, we're, it's, makes sense to have a lawyer there. He wrote the original draft. We have since made changes as a planning board. He should receive the final copy of the warrants now, as soon as possible, so that he has time to review it. We were gonna have, he's got this, so, thank you, Greg, he's got the materials. He is more familiar with it than KPM, you know, zoning lawyers who are not working on the case. So I think simply having a logistical conversation with the moderator there is fine.
So we have a motion to that.
Any planning board members going to attend?
Any further discussion? All right, I'll take a vote on the motion to have Sarah and Chris and, and, and maybe Wilson have a discussion with Bobrowski on the process for repatification at special town meeting. Roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
My yes to no. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
I'll second. Who, you can say.
The pass.
All those in favor? You'll have to vote.